All right, welcome everyone to the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. City of Tuolton Work Session. First on agenda tonight is the Climate Action Plan Draft Adoption Actions led by Matty and Nick. Welcome.
Mayor Council, good to see you.
You're here in person. Wow. Welcome. Your mic's on?
Nope. Nope. Now it is. Well, maybe not. When it's red, it is. There you go.
There it is. Hi, okay.
Clicker will move your, the presentation clicker.
Yes, perfect. Awesome. Okay, I'll scoot up so you guys can actually hear me. Let me, go ahead. All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Matty Cheek, Management Analyst in our Public Works Department. I'll introduce our guests here in just a second. But briefly, this is Josh Proudfoot and Jess Pickle. And you already introduced yourself, correct?
Yeah, Deputy Public Works Director, Nick Westendorf. Good to see y'all.
Thank you. Okay. So we're here today to talk about the draft adaptation actions. We'll do a deep dive into the strategies and then kind of a sampling of different actions. We wanted to show you all an array of different kinds of actions included in the plan. And we'll also talk about how they were developed and what kind of community input went into them. Because we didn't just make these up out of thin air. So excited to talk a little bit more about that, too. Just a reminder, before we get too deep into it, the Climate Action Plan is not a regulatory document, but rather a menu of options to help us meet our goals of reducing emissions and then also creating a healthy and thriving community as we face these changes that we're going to be dealing with. All right, so quick overview. I'll introduce these guys in just a second. Josh will talk about the local impacts of climate change in Tuolton. Jess will talk about community concerns, including, or not just concerns, but also what folks, what kind of help people need and what they're hoping to get out of this as well. And then we'll dive into the sample actions in each focus area and strategy and then open it up for Q and A. And so just really quick, logistically, the presentation itself will be about forty minutes, forty to forty-five. We'll try to keep it as brief as we can. And then we'll have about thirty minutes for Q and A. I know it's a lot of information coming at you all. This is a really big plan and big process that we've all gone through. So we're doing our best to kind of keep it streamlined, but just bear with us as we wade through it. We'll ask that you please hold your questions until the very end. And then also note, I put the slide numbers on the bottom right corner. So if there's a slide you want to return to later, go ahead and jot that down. And we're happy to flip back through that during the Q and A. Okay, so our consultants, to my left is Josh Proudfoot, the Director of Climate and ESG at Good Company, which recently became a division of Parametrics. Josh and his team offered technical expertise on the project, including researching Tuolton's climate conditions, conducting our emissions inventory, helping us draft strategies and actions, and then also helping us quantify cost and emissions reduction potential for the strategies in the mitigation section. And then to my right is Jess, who's an Executive Officer and Senior Program Manager at JLA Public Involvement. She and her team helped us to craft meaningful educational and engagement opportunities to gather community input, which played a really big role in shaping the plan. So thrilled to have them both here, and I'll pass it over to Josh.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight and for putting your attention and resources on this project. All right, so big picture. For climate change, there's two seasons. We're moving towards two seasons. A hot and dry season and a wet and cool season. So in the summertime, by twenty eighty, if we took no action globally and things progressed as they are, we'd see Tuolton experiencing conditions in the summer that are very similar to Central Valley, California. So that means the average summer temperature would be about fourteen degrees warmer and we'd be significantly drier. Another way to look at that is about a hundred extra growing days in the year. So on one level, that could be good. On another level, not so good. Next slide, please. All right, so with heat and dryness, what comes with that is fire. We've all experienced fire. Fire and smoke. Smoke in particular is becoming the dominant effect that we have to adapt to. And I think we've all experienced things where the fire is nowhere near us, but the smoke sure is. And we have to deal with it, whether that's in our house, at work, just getting from A to B. And I think probably the best example of this is when Central BC was on fire and Florida was in dangerous air quality from that. Like, that's telling us something. We have to figure this part out. Next slide, please. Okay, wet season. So this is a little bit weird to think about, but we're not going to get more water. We're going to get the same amount of water, but it's going to be tucked into a shorter window and it's going to come in more intense bursts. So if you've heard the term atmospheric river or experienced it, it's really truly a major dumping of moisture back onto the earth. And when you have a globally warmer planet, you have more moisture in the air categorically, which is why we have more ice storms and snow storms. But more than anything else, we'll experience big rain and flooding. Next slide, please. Okay, this study's fantastic. It's a meta-study, which means a study of all the studies of economics, of how climate change would affect the country. And I would first point you to the upper left with agricultural yields. So we expect agriculture to grow fifty percent roughly. And that's because of those extra growing days and the extra heat, assuming we manage our water well. If you look in the bottom right, you can see total direct damages. So the red is bad and there's a lot of it and the green is good. So on net, we're going to see a decrease in winter problems and an increase in summer problems. But if you keep looking at those other ones, like let's say right in the middle at the top, mortality change, we're going to see a decrease because our winters are going to get milder. But look at how the deaths in the southern states increase dramatically. And if you look at energy prices, the south is burdened by resources that are greenhouse gas intensive. They could establish solar, but from where we are now, they will have to pay a lot more for that transition than we will in the Pacific Northwest. And then the one that I really don't like looking at is property crime and violent crime increasing in the north and not in the south, decreasing in the south. What that tells us is we're going to see migration of folks. When things get costlier and less comfortable, they're going to start moving north where things are actually pretty nice. So that's another effect that we're going to have to manage is just dramatic population growth. And I don't think that's everybody climbing up I five at once. I think that's bit by bit, somebody saying, all right, I've had too many days in Phoenix over a hundred and ten. I'm done. I'm going to move. And I think it'll happen one by one. All right, next slide. Okay, Oregon Health Authority made this table. And I don't need to read it all to you, but these are the things that they're already spotting increases. They're seeing more disease vectors, right? So mosquitoes are coming here in larger quantities. They're hatching earlier. They're carrying different diseases. The smoke problems are known to everybody. Sea level rise really isn't a Tuolton problem. But the mental health conditions and things like Lyme disease are things that will start to accumulate. And the thing that I want to suggest is that it's not that everything's going to be bad. It's that it's changing and it's going to take some time to figure that out. And all you need to do is look farther south to see how people have lived in similar conditions over time. Right? It's not that it's not done. People are living in the Central Valley of California. They're living in Mexico and farther south. And there's a lot to learn from people there. Next slide. All right, I'll pass it over to Jess. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thanks again for your time this evening. So since the beginning of the planning process for the Climate Action Plan, we've been able to speak with and hear feedback from hundreds of community members. And that includes hearing from over three hundred people that just recently participated in the online open house, which was an opportunity to preview what's in the Climate Action Plan. So that just actually closed on Friday. So throughout tonight's presentation, I'm going to do my best to kind of give you live updates on what we've heard and the level of acceptance of what was included in that plan. But leading up to the development of that plan, we did hear from hundreds of community members through online events, sitting at actual community events like farmers markets. We participated in several different business networking opportunities, surveys. We were out. We talked to businesses. We were out making sure that we made ourselves available, even through the website and social media, because not everybody knew initially that the city was doing this. So we were able to build awareness throughout the effort. And even for those who are reluctantly, they're not sure that climate change is a thing, we did hear that there were, people are starting to recognize that their summers are a little bit hotter, the winters are a little bit less predictable, and they're feeling a little bit uncertain about what to do. So that was the thing that we heard, I think, loud and clear from the public. You know, even if the weather is a little bit more unpredictable, I want to be able to do something about it. And I'm not sure what my resources are. And so that's, that's kind of the like, the starting point of the discussion with the community members. And we were able to get a lot of really valuable feedback about what are the ways that we can support them? And what is the information that they need or the resources that we can connect them to to make this feel a little bit easier and something that will allow us to be more proactive? Not something that's just happening to us. So as you can see, we've kind of rolled up the top community concerns for you here. And so exposure to climate hazards. As Josh mentioned, we are starting to experience more smoke. Hotter summers. We're not able to do things as comfortably as we would like to do. And some of that presents health risks, as Josh just mentioned. We heard a lot of people say that they are, it's challenging to get to work because either they work outside or the place that they work is too hot. It's not as temperate. Our buildings don't necessarily have adequate HVAC. So it's a little bit more uncomfortable. And or it's actually just hard to travel because the roads are flooded or icy or snowy. And so it's just getting, it's something that's impacting people to get to work, but also that has economic impacts for our businesses as well. Cost to repair damage. I, for one, had it down the limb and it took down a car and part of my roof. And that was just, that's my own personal story. But we heard about lots of stories like that from people in Tuolton. That with these more extreme weather changes, they are talking about higher help or excuse me, home insurance, flooding insurance, and just like general costs to repairs on our home. I talked about transportation a little bit already. We also heard quite a bit about how those who are most vulnerable are also, honestly, they're impacted the greatest and they're not always able to control their environment. So people that are houseless, people that don't have the ability to afford some of the like things that make it a little bit more comfortable, they are feeling this the worst. And then increased cost of energy. We're all relying on energy more. And as we are experiencing more variable weather, people are staying inside more. And so like that actually adds to the costs. The cost of living is increasing. So these are all things that just kind of bubbled up. It felt almost like, yes, we need to do something about it and where do I start? So with that, I'm going to pass it off to, oh, actually, next slide. Yep.
Okay, so before we dive into the meat of the presentation here in terms of actions and strategies and all that, I just want to kind of orient us to how this will flow. So we've got nine strategies to cover tonight. For each one, Jess is first going to talk about some kind of higher level themes and what we heard from the community as applicable. And then Josh is going to share a few specific examples of actions as well. When we get to those sample action text slides, I know they're really ugly slides. I'm sorry about that. PowerPoint one oh one failed, right? But we wanted to make sure we included all of the, the actual language from the plan on there. But I wanted to highlight that we pulled out two types of icons for those slides. So we've got the city role. There's three different roles. Implement, convene, and then support or advocate. And then we also have the policy decision icon on those as well to just alert you to the fact that that is one that would need to come back before the council for a larger conversation. So just to reiterate that this will all be kind of a work in progress and, and more conversations in the future. All right, I'm going to pass it to Jess to kick us off.
Okay, so this first strategy is about improving the resilience of Tuolton's natural systems, resources, and infrastructure to extreme heat. I'm just curious, by show of hands, who here takes advantage of Tuolton's outdoor recreation options? Yeah, so, so do most people. That's why most people live in Tuolton. Because of your beautiful parks, your trails, your river. That's why people want to live here. And we heard from many community members that it's feeling harder to do that because it's just either too hot, too crowded, there's algae blooms, there's a lot of things to think about. And so that is what this is all about. So we heard quite a lot of feedback from folks that tree canopy. This seems like a pretty easy way to support those in Tuolton because it helps us stay cooler when we're walking to the bus stop, when we're in our parks. And we also just know that our playgrounds are getting hotter. We've included park design standards in here because I don't know who here has recently wrote down a plastic slide in the peak of summer, but I have, and it's really hot. And so we heard that from many community members. And it's simple things like just thinking about playground materials and making sure that there is trees or some sort of coverage. By the way, I don't normally slide down slides. I have two small kids, so that's. I was noticing some like chatter.
We were talking about back in the day when they were steel, but we. Yes.
Yeah. But there are very like strategic things that we can do even, you know, like with our park design standards. We also, I mentioned, you know, like river health, but people, as it's getting hotter, people want to cool down. And so that looks like getting into our water bodies. But it also looks like splash pads and just like other, you know, pools and ways to just stay cooler on hot days. And finally, sheltered transit stops. This seemed like low hanging fruit. People are really interested in taking transit. They did comment that sometimes the stops are pretty far apart. And certainly the elements, they're not always protected from the elements getting to the transit stop. But then when they're at the stop, having shelter can make a big difference for shade. And I know we're talking about heat right now, but it also protects folks from rain and wind as well. So those are just some of the things that we talked about with the public. But I also want to just real quickly, before we get, before I pass it over to Josh, this whole strategy area was actually one of the most supported areas in the most recent online open house. Seventy-five percent of people who participated showed support. Those who expressed concerns. It was really about trade-offs of costs. So what's the benefit of the cost of some of these strategies and actions? And we also heard just a general concern that with the increased development that's happening in Tuolton, it actually minimizes some of our canopy. So just being thoughtful about our, our development process.
Thank you. Take a moment to read the bold text and maybe a little bit below. And I'll talk to each one of them, but just take a moment to read. Okay, this fits a lot what you just heard from Jess, right? People just want to make sure that they can stay cool wherever they are. And Tuolton has a beautiful canopy, but there are holes in that canopy. And so figuring out where those are and making sure those are filled in makes for safe passage for everybody everywhere. So that's a, a pretty easy one to consider. And those studies, I've seen those studies being very low tech and very high tech, but they don't need to be expensive, just so you know. That can be done with GIS. It might even be done by your own folks pretty quickly. This stormwater treatment facility species. So this is just a challenge with public landscapes everywhere, right? Whatever the tree is, whatever the shrub is, it has to survive these weird ice storms that show up periodically and also drought and also heat, right? So those things make for a short plant list. And if you talk to anybody that's doing this professionally, they're looking south. That's where we're getting the West. So it's not rocket science, but it needs to be done. And as trees come out, new trees, species need to come in. And we want to make sure that those species will adapt and survive. Park design standards, same thing with, with bus stops and streetscapes is you want to make sure you're softening those experiences. And I just came back from an active and public transportation conference. And the entire thing was focused on making sure that people are safe where they're going because there's so many experiences recently with extreme heat. And one of the things they brought out was, hey, a bus shelter that has good rain shelter has some shade shelter, but the sun moves around in the day. And so sometimes that shelter is great when you don't need it. So that's one of the things is they're rethinking that design to be both shade oriented and rain protected. And I think most of our shelters are about rain up here. All right, back to you.
Okay, similar to the last strategy, this is about creating resilience for Tuolton's natural systems, resources, and infrastructure to handle the increased fire and smoke events. So when we started engaging the public on the Climate Action Plan, I feel like the top story that I heard in the beginning was, oh, the summer of the Camp Creek Fire. Like people started to notice that things were changing, but it was that event that stood out to them because they experienced firsthand this very prolonged period of time of being in extreme smoke. And businesses, homes were destroyed, people were evacuated. It was scary, not to mention it was also COVID. So we were locked indoors. And so I think that it was one of those moments where people started to be like, okay, I, I don't want to find myself in that situation again. Like, how can I actually start to be a little bit more proactive about this? And so with those community stories, we heard things like I had to close my windows. I didn't have air conditioning. I didn't have access to air filters. I didn't know what to do. And so they were asking for, what are my options to make sure that I can find affordable air filters? And like, how can I talk to my building manager about making sure that when these events do happen, we can stay safe and cool? So some of the resources that we are recommending with this particular strategy is just connecting people with Firewise and really great guidance that's already out there. So Firewise is great because it connects community members to information to help them better plan for what's happening on their properties. They can figure out how to connect to alerts that will let them know, you know, like when they need to plan for certain events. And these are pretty easy and approachable things that people just weren't aware of. I also just want to mention that during some of these events, I also, as a separate project, I supported PGE this summer with six community events focused on wildfire mitigation. And so they were talking to community members about why they shut off the power during wildfire events. And both the stories I heard with the Climate Action Plan and this summer for PGE were similar. You know, when power needs to be shut off because of wildfires, it means that they don't have, if they're on a well, they can't use their drinking water. It's hard to give their livestock or animals water. There's food spoilage. There's a lot of other things that go along with it. So helping people be a little bit more proactive and get that information and alerts ahead of time is incredibly important.
Excellent. All right, take a moment to read this. Not just wildfire, but also smoke. There's a SmokeWise program. And what we've learned from community after community is you can create a shelter, like a high school that has purification, but people don't actually want to travel in those conditions. So what we've learned is that from community after community is you, you need a program to support people to shelter in place, which really means getting air filters out and cooling for these events. So it's not, not exactly a sweeping event, but to support this and get the message out is really important. And the more forested you are, the more threatened you are. And it's ironic because it's great in the heat. You want that shade. But also if you have the trees nearby, you have some increased fire risk. So there's ways to do that better. So this is a strong recommendation. Excellent.
So similar to the last strategies, this one's actually focused on precipitation events, including flooding and winter storms. And this one, we received a little bit less or fewer public comments and concerns about it, but it still was impactful. I think that one of the things that I heard a lot about was just that people were experiencing flooding in their basement. And you know, that, that's like a hardship for them because it's extremely expensive. People have bedrooms and home offices down in their basement. And so what do they even do? It seems like a very expensive thing for a homeowner to try to resolve. And so we did hear a lot of questions about like, what are the most effective ways to help with stormwater? But also, hey, I'm curious about doing different landscaping changes, but I don't even know what's most effective, like who can I talk to? I can't afford a landscaper. And so connecting folks with just more information about opportunities to make home improvements was one thing that we heard loud and clear from the public. And I already touched on this before, but these extreme winter, I would say, events with the flooding and, and just winter storms, it does make it just challenging for people to get around. And so I mentioned that it takes an impact on our economy, but people also are just relying on that income. So when they can't get places because it's icy or snowy, it, it feels real. And it, a lot of times it actually like reduces their workday.
So take a moment to read just the bold print. Okay, so again, these are kind of the new challenges of how do we redefine our landscapes? So folks can hold water there so we don't have as big events on the roadways and in the downtown area like the ninety-six flood. And when you do that, you want to do it well, like one point, three point five, where you're picking things that are suited for the species that are coming or are already here. And then perhaps the most important thing would be to figure out how you're going to manage that big flooding area downtown. And can you change some of the code? So as new buildings come in, they're, they're safer, they're designed better, and maybe a flood's not such a big deal to them. There are in hurricane-prone areas, building standards that allow for water to come up onto the retail picture glass, and it still doesn't come in the building. So there are certain things that might be there that you want to develop piece by piece toward. So there are certain things that might be there that you wanna develop piece by piece towards the tomorrow that you're trying to create.
Alright, so now that we've heard a lot about the kind of physical environment, built environment type stuff, um, we're gonna move on to the health and safety aspect of it, so focusing more on people. Um, and this includes kind of education and communications type things, and then also, um, more social programming to help folks adapt. Um, whether it's at home or at work as well. Um, yeah, that's all I wanted to say on that, so go ahead Jess.
And, um, Maddie's helping us out by having a, a timer up here, so I'm just going to, for the like benefit of the group. Um, just whatever, Josh and I are gonna keep it a little bit more succinct moving forward. So that way we make sure that we have, um, plenty of time for questions. Um, so if I go too quickly on something, don't worry, you'll have plenty of time to ask more. Um, so this next strategy is about increasing preparedness and provide resources to help people who live, work, play and learn in Tuolton. To better handle extreme heat events. And so with the most recent online open house, um, this was another strategy area that most people who participated in it, participated in that event supported, um, we had seventy percent of all participants said that they support it. And of those who, um, didn't necessarily support it, we heard things like there's maybe bigger priorities for the city. And more questions about just like the overall cost of some of the things that we're recommending. Um, for this particular strategy for the heat events, um, we, this is where we actually received quite a lot of comments about people, um, like what do we do for our, our houseless community? Um, are there cooling centers? Can we make more cooling, like, like areas where people can stay cool? And we also heard some comments that the library can't actually absorb all of the demand for a cooling center in summer. So those are just some of the things that stood out to me. Josh?
So rental housing maintenance standards, um, this is emerging nationally as the way to, uh, let landlords know that cooling is a, a new priority for this area. Uh, there is a lot of legislative activity to help fund this. Uh, there are a lot of tax incentives and utility incentives. But the goal is not to get the portable air conditioners, the goal is to get the permanent heat pumps that also can provide heat in the winter. But to have it be permanent, so it's always there, it doesn't move with the people that, um, that buy it. And also that it's much more efficient than a traditional air conditioner. So heat pumps, uh, it takes a little bit of doing to get into it. But the incentives are really strong, the federal tax breaks are about thirty percent on that equipment. And the state is looking to support it further because the heat dome event woke up this state on the same thing that, let's say that winter storm in Texas that froze all the natural gas valves woke them up, oh, we need new code two. So rental code has been the fulcrum for a lot of cities and counties to do that. Uh, with a lot of support to the landlords so that they can get the return on that investment that they're making. Uh, this shelter, this is very important. And I'd say during the smoke event, it has to be indoors. But one of the things we're learning from people that design and make parks is originally the idea was to save water, let things brown out. And now we're realizing, no, you actually need a cool environment for people to go to get out of that heat. And whether that's just sitting under the tree or you've actually got grass there, it's dramatically lower in temperature than hard surfaces. Sometimes fifty, sixty degrees difference. So it might be a consideration rather than being frugal on water. You may actually wanna apply water just to create these environments where people can be safe and enjoy themselves in these moments.
So, um, again, this is about increasing preparedness and providing resources, um, for people to better handle more frequent wildfire and smoke events. Um, and I've, I kinda touched on this earlier, but we've heard from lots of community members that they just, A, couldn't find air filters or afford some of the air filter, air filtration, um, devices when there have been smoke events. And, um, when there have been, you know, these, these events, they also are indoors. And it feels like they're just kinda like, they're trapped. Um, and so we talked to a lot of people that rented, they also didn't feel like they had a lot of control over what was happening with the buildings. And they weren't even sure if it was something that they could talk to their building management or they weren't getting a lot of information. So one of the ways that we're, um, proposing to support our community is to just promote, um, higher air filtration standards um, in our buildings. And so that way it supports people when they have to be indoors. You wanna build on that?
Just for a second, um, a lot of the, um, air filters that are in people's furnaces and other systems that already exist. You can retrofit or upgrade from what's called a MERV eleven, it's a weird unit, to MERV thirteen. And it retrofits right in, so it shouldn't be costly for everybody and you're changing filters already. Um, uh, so it doesn't have to be a major impact. And also the mask, not like anybody wants to wear a mask anymore. But if you work outside and it's not too hot, but it is smoky, you can still earn a living and you can be safe with a good mask. So that's an- another takeaway, but you go to the next slide. Okay, this take, it should take a little moment to read. So this is basically the same story. The only thing that I'd add is in our engagement, uh, the health and safety officer from Pacific Boots who was extremely supportive, said that during one of the smoke events, they had to shut down their workplace. Not just because people couldn't drive in some places to get there, but actually they couldn't meet the indoor air quality standards. They couldn't filter it enough to make it safe by law inside the building. So this is something that's coming, people know about it and there are solutions, we just need to evolve towards it.
Okay, um, and this is also about preparedness and providing resources to people, um, to handle impacts of heavy precipitation and, um, winter storms. And I'll just share, so we did a, a youth workshop, um, that was really well attended. And one of the things that I felt, I don't know, it was like maybe one of the heartwarming moments of that meeting was that there was a lot of students that were like, you know what, there are a lot of kids that don't have enough warm coats. And I actually know a lot of people that could benefit from just a coat drive. Is there something that we can do, can the city put on like a, a coat drive? And then it kinda snowballed and people were talking about, actually it'd be great to do a whole emergency, um, preparedness event. So that way we can learn about what resources for food, for clothing, other things, like who do we call? How do we connect with like different information so that way we can be prepared before these events happen? Um, and so that is actually a part of the climate action plan, um, is to do some of these preparedness events. Make sure that we can actually connect people with some of these just kinda low hanging fruit opportunities that is actually being championed by some of our students. Um, I'll also just add that we heard that when ice storms happen, um, again, power outage just happened. And, um, people aren't always sure how long the power's gonna be out, but that might impact their heating. And so similar to needing cooling centers, there was a demand for where can I go to stay warm? And, um, especially our most vulnerable community members like our, um, aging community members and our houseless community members, where do they go? Um, and you know what, I'm just gonna skip my next spot and just let Josh get into it.
So related to flooding, um, understanding what's coming at you from upriver before it arrives would help a lot. Um, I know there's some, uh, level of kind of social infrastructure there, but that's something that needs to be very deliberately cultivated. Uh, the sandbag program, again, this is something that's well understood in many communities across the US. And we can learn specifically from the South that has more of the hurricane events that flood the streets. But making that easy for folks, you know, when an event's coming, uh, getting all the bags out, getting the word out, having sand dropped on every block, you know, really trying to facilitate that. And having that program developed and ready to go is important. And that clothing drive, it's simple, but in the winter, that's something we can do something about. The summer's a little harder, although water access is key there. And that's one thing I would just share, is in those heat events, even if there isn't cooling, there's almost always a shower available. And what we've learned is most of the folks that died during the heat dome event did not go into the shower. And they, they were checked on and they said, oh yes, I've got cooling, but it's expensive and I'm okay. So we just gotta remind people, these things do exist, you can take care of yourself, but you have to be deliberate and get the word out.
Alright, last focus area to cover here, um, the actions in this section are really gonna focus on, um, businesses and workers. Um, and ensuring that businesses and, and workers can thrive in these conditions as well. Um, so we heard a lot about supply chain disruptions and then as we've heard throughout the presentation, kind of challenges with either getting to work or being able to have a full productive workday due to, uh, the conditions. So we'll address those, um, here.
Um, so this first strategy is about improving resilience of Tuolton's businesses and workers to extreme heat. Um, and so extreme heat makes it more than just a little uncomfortable if you're in a hot facility. Um, it can actually be deadly. And so, I mean, luckily we have, um, improved standards by OSHA, but we also need to make sure that we're able to support businesses with meeting those needs and understanding what's included in it and connecting them to resources. So that's a pretty simple way to support our businesses. We also wanna recognize though that not everybody works in a building. Um, we have a lot of people that work outdoors, so we have people that are landscapers. We have our outdoor educators and daycare providers. We have, um, this is an agricultural community, um, so we have a lot of people that are maintaining small farms and our grapes that taste like smoke when, um, when there's smoke events. And so all of these are things that, um, we heard from the community that they're thinking about. Um, and so we wanna make sure that we're thinking about ways to support our people that are also working outdoors. And before I, sorry, before we move on, this was the section, um, in the climate action plan that maybe had the least amount of support. Um, but still more than half, so sixty-one percent of the people that participated in the online open house did say that they support the actions that are included in the climate action plan. And those who, um, so twenty-one percent, so still a notable percentage, said that they don't support the actions included. And part of it was related to just one, um, feeling like the city doesn't necessarily need to support businesses if businesses are thinking about what they need. And so they might not actually need the city to support them in that way. There were also some concerns about, um, whether or not code changes or some of the new requirements would actually cost businesses more. Um, and they, actually we had quite a few comments just about how by including things like more stringent cooling requirements for our commercial buildings, um, actually kinda goes against some of our climate goals. Um, so that wasn't necessarily like opposed to the strategies, but it was just something for us to think about.
Those pretty tightly aligned with the last two slides. I just, uh, say that nothing hurts more than a large workplace that can't work. So, you know, sometimes this code can be protective. And, uh, you know, for example, if you have a, a flat roof that is dark versus a flat roof that's white, uh, the cooling system needs to work on a ninety degree day on a black roof. It needs to bring it down another thirty-five degrees beyond what the white roof does because the surface temperature gets hot. So some simple things like that in the code, uh, you know, saying a white roof or a reflective roof or a heat reflective roof will actually save them tremendous amounts of money and just make the workplace safer. So it's those kinds of wins that you'd wanna put in the code.
Um, so we also touched on, um, ways to support our businesses and workers during fire risk and smoke events. Um, and we heard from several businesses that, you know, during these events, they actually have to halt operation. Um, and or people just can't get to work, and so what do they do in those situations? And so there's, there are financial assistances or assistance programs for businesses. So just connecting business owners with what those resources are and how to apply for them is one way that we can support our businesses in Tuolton. Um, I also, we heard from, again, our outdoor workers, they, um, the difference with hot days is that they can work, you know, when it's cooler hours in the morning and in the evening. But when it's smoky or there's a fire, they can't work outside at all. And so that is a loss of income and cost of living is increasing as we all know. And so the, these are, it's, it's challenging times. So I think that there's just, nobody wants to deal with smoke or fires, but it also like, it's hitting people's paychecks.
So those businesses that are most affected by smoke are the ones that don't have filtration uh, at the standard that they need to. Um, again, reminding you that one of the major workplaces that's very careful and always has been very careful with their environment, Pacific Boots, is bumped into the limits of that. Um, and maybe there's not too much to do other than alert everybody and make sure everybody knows, hey, we're entering this program, this is what it means for you. We'll try and, you know, do catch-up shifts or whatever it is, but we need to support them. Um, and the supply chain disruptions, those are another thing that can slow everything down. And I, I don't know how much you can do other than support, uh, detour routes and detouring in these events. But sometimes those detours might be hundreds of miles away, right? That was one of the surprises. Uh, the old thinking was fire is what shuts down the road, now it's fire and smoke. And you might have to do a four or five hour detour just for the smoke. So just, just taking smoke as seriously as it is because it's more likely than fire to be in here.
Okay, um, how do we support Tuolton's businesses and workers during, uh, flooding and winter storm events? Um, we heard a couple of things from our community, one of them is just that generators, um, are pretty cost prohibitive, especially for smaller businesses. Um, and so, um, connecting, um, our minority owned or DB owned, uh, firms with different generator opportunities and, uh, financial, financial, uh, assistance programs. Sorry, a lot of talking. Um, and so that's one opportunity to help our small businesses. Another thing is that we have a sandbag program and so that can help, um, our businesses, especially where we know that they're in a flood zone, uh, actually get to the sandbags. That can help protect our, uh, downtown businesses and even, um, some of our, not even downtown, but some of our businesses that we know that are gonna be in the flood zone. Um, is there anything that I'm missing, Josh, or any?
Uh, really just that if it's possible to develop more storage, that's really important. So that you can hold that water in places other than the roads. And when you're tearing up roads, maybe building vaults underneath them to hold water or finding park space or open space that can, uh, divert some of the water into it. Uh, those are the most common strategies to reduce flood impacts. Uh, do you wanna go to the next one?
Yeah, click on this one so we have enough time for.
Uh, more than anything, it's get the word out and help people know what they're going to do when the time comes and where they're. Uh, more than anything, it's get the word out and help people know what they're going to do when the time comes and where they're gonna get what. So, uh, these floods are gonna be more common, uh, the hundred year storm event is being called in our circles more than twenty years.
Okay, so last thing here before I hand it back to the mayor for Q and A. Um, so that was a lot of info, um. I'm excited to have more of a conversation about it in just a moment. Um, we'll be back in two weeks to review the mitigation actions with you in sort of a similar style to this presentation. Um, and then following that, we'll finalize the plan based on your feedback and of course, all the feedback from the community, um, from that online open house that just closed. Um, once it's finalized, we'll come back for adoption and then we can begin implementation, which will of course, um, require some level of prioritization and. Resource allocation and all that fun stuff to talk about moving forward, so. Um, with that, thank you all for listening and, um, back to you, Mayor.
All right, uh, before I, uh, ask for questions, I'm gonna have you go way back. Uh, to your, one of your first comments, for folks who don't understand, can you explain that this is not a regulatory document or? You know, that it's a plan versus, um. A requirement.
Certainly.
Some people get nervous up here from the business community that we're gonna, you know, make this happen and change our rules overnight. Uh, could you explain what the difference is?
Yeah, so, um, if this were to be a regulatory document, uh, if this being adopted would be, okay, all these one hundred and fifty actions. Done, let's do it and that's just not possible, right? Like, there's so many details to iron out and. That is one thing we heard a ton throughout engagement was, I think I'm supportive, but the devil's in the details and it always is and so. To acknowledge that, um, we do have all of those policy decision type. Markers in there to say, hey, here's an idea that could help us get there. Um, but hashing out every single detail about how that moves forward is going to be really important. Um, and need to be bought into and driven by the council, so I hope that helps to clarify, um, yeah.
Questions? Also Brooks.
Thank you very much for all of your work, it's a hefty document and a big presentation. And, um, and I know it's not just you guys, there's a whole big huge committee that's been working on this. Um, and you've been working on this throughout our, throughout our whole state, so, um. I just appreciate all the, the mindfulness and effort that went into it, I had a couple. Uh, questions, my first question is, uh, what is Parametrics?
Parametrics is, that's, it's funny you say that, um, we're getting that question a lot. It's a civil engineering and environmental science firm. And we're west coast based, but we grew out of the Puget Sound area. So we have offices in six states.
Thank you, and I think that's really great for, um, incorporating resources and wisdom so that we can learn and. One of the things we have to do is figure out how to do things, not just. Efficiently doesn't mean just fast, right, effectively, so, um, I. I had a question about, um, including in the plan and, or I'm not exactly sure how this works, but. Just, uh, sort of a big picture item, we talk about increasing access to. Um, financial resources for businesses and for just all these different programs. I had one come over today that was a voucher program that's just been put out by the. Department of Energy that cities can, um, access, so I'm just curious. Is there anything in this strategy about how we are. Flexible, um, in attaining that kinda information to help support. As many carrots as we can do for our businesses or community members in our city.
Can I start?
Sure.
The, the Inflation Reduction Act is sending a lot of money to states to you, be used for two things. One to reduce emissions and the other one is to make people safer. And, um, what that, there are so many subprograms that it, it takes research for most communities. To figure out which ones matter to us and then apply, but I'd say that there's a ticking clock on that. And, uh, it was designed to get the money out quickly, but actually not everybody can keep up with that pace. Because there's so much coming in so many places that it's hard to say, what do I look at? So you should take the time to do research, you probably want a business analyst to look at this. Uh, to find the resources that fit your objectives, so like heat pumps are very specific and there's funding just for that. At the utility level, at the state level and at the federal level. So consider that, put things in buckets and then go research it because the, the money is bigger right now than it has been. And moreover, EPA has separate discreet funds. That they're making available for communities that have gone through a process like this to petition for grant funds. But again, it's on quick timelines and it's allocated across states, but when a state doesn't use it. The fund accumulates and others can ask for it. So that's been something where, um, for example, that the tribal nations have dramatically more money than requests for it. So there's opportunities for more than the normal share if others are saying, no, thank you. Not, not to take it from the tribes, there's separate money in the tribal bucket. Than there is for cities, just to be clear.
I just was wondering if there's a best practices in strategically doing something like that because, um. Because it does seem like a lot of information and really quick, so I just was wondering if there's like a, a way of increasing nimbleness around that. And if that's something that would go into a climate action plan. Because it's a capacity building conversation. And I don't know where it is or if we did that and I was on that committee too, so it's not, I'm just thinking about it. It's interesting when you look back at everything after you've been having it right in your face.
Yeah, right, um, I think the way this shows up in the plan is we have a number of actions that are either amplifying existing programs or resources. Or increasing community awareness around those things or better coordination with our partner agencies and they look a little bit different depending on what. The situation is solving for, what the program is. And frankly, uh, not something we've been in the business in very long, so figuring out like where those communication channels are and who our stakeholders are. We've learned a lot in the planning process, but I think we still need to continue to build upon that. Um, so it, it shows up in a number of actions, I think it's something we'll have to work on for a while to improve.
Right, and then, um. I had two more, one was with water diversion conversations. How do you balance water diversion with the potential for drought, like?
Great question. So I'm hearing a lot of heated debate about whether we keep our dams or not. But if we could have everything perfect, you'd want that water to permeate through the soil, find its own water table. Create its own waterways, but I'm not sure we have that luxury. So I don't know if there's gonna be further impoundment of the water or not. But it's kind of this strange thing of, we know we need to keep fish healthy and happy. But we also know the conditions are changing and that the species we know won't be successful over time. So it's how do we keep waterways open for the new species that are coming? And this is a strange thing, but the general term is ecological function. So we're not replacing and saying, no forests, we're saying different trees in that forest, different fish in that stream. And so with water, there's this challenge of, are we protecting the fish? Are we holding that water for irrigation and can we do both? And right now, I'm not hearing any consensus on that. I will say though, I am hearing more and more acceptance of the Endangered Species Act may be outdated. When the conditions don't support the species we're trying to protect. So that it kind of, these are some of the really tough questions, like. Will we assist migration of trees in big forests, does that mean we replant them? Or do we wait till they die and burn and hope the birds bring seeds? Right, so there's, we have to make some choices about how much natural world we can have and how much we need to control it. And I know it's really difficult, but I don't have an answer for you on that.
Well, and my question wasn't that global, my question was more about specifically when you're talking about. Um, water mitigation through flood, uh, tanks and storage. Do you?
Under parking, under streets, in, uh, intersections.
Is there ways to can manage that when it's drier? Does the water just go straight to drop, drop on it or to mitigate flow?
During the event, you can hold more, so if you have more storage, you can reduce the speed of the flow. How long you're gonna store that depends on the vessels that you put underneath, but we did a study for San Diego Airport. And they were looking at the cost of capturing that stormwater and then using it later. Their choice was to flush toilets with it, but they're actually gonna hold all of that s- surface area water. And hold it for many months into their drought season.
Okay, and then my final question was, um, is there, um. A way that for pri- as we're looking through this plan in the future, I'm, I'm not talking about the plan today, but as we look into the future. Um, for helping with policy decisions, is there, um. Ways that we're gonna look at past success drivers to look at where we can get the most bang for our buck? So we're just looking at this great big plan and, yeah. What's the navigation strategy?
Yeah, I'll take that one, um, so fortunately, we're not the first people to do a plan like this, which is great. Um, we're a part of a network called the Urban Sustainability Directors Network and that's been an amazing resource. For us to kinda connect with folks who are doing this work and say, okay, this was a failure and here's why, or this was a success and here's why and so. I think kind of maintaining and hopefully amplifying those connections a little bit more so that we can learn from peers that have gone through this. Um, will be really, really key for us, so kind of dabbling in it, but, you know, we'll see.
And I, I'd just add to that, that wherever it's happened multiple times in other communities, you have a more mature response. So don't imitate the first movement of somebody else, imitate the third movement. Um, it's really became clear in a lot of, um, our discussions across different communities. That you, you have to feel it a couple of times before you have a refined program.
Well, like I said, I'm really grateful and not just for the climate part, but I know that this kinda work helps save lives. And I know I never had any kinda heat problem and I had one. And it's confusing, so I can understand how people can get confused and not know how to take care of themselves. So that education piece and, um, making sure that the wellbeing of everybody's protected is, uh, really important and I appreciate that work, thanks.
Thank you.
President Pratt.
Right, I guess I'll start, I have two different areas, ones, I guess more big picture, once this climate action plan is finalized and then. How will each policy be brought to us and will there be, I'm thinking, uh, I guess I, uh, go specifically to businesses. But if we make a policy that affects businesses and requirements, will there be input from the public to make sure we're considering? Um, all the perspectives?
Yeah, so I'll take the input question first, um, I envision it being yes, I think that I, I see all of these policy actions as projects in and of themselves. Which would require kind of research, engagement, maybe not to the level that this whole plan had, right? But, um, some level of outreach to the affected parties to ensure that they're on board and at least know kind of. You know, what the trade offs are, we need to be informed about that because these have real, real impacts, so, um, to that piece, yes. Um, regarding prioritization, um, I mean, I think that we as staff and consultants have ideas about what. Maybe ought to be prioritized from an impact standpoint, um, that being said, we're not the only voices in the room and so I think having council input and. Um, taking what we've learned from the community engagement processes that we've been through will be really helpful to. Kind of balance impact and cost and political will and all of that, so I don't know if you wanna add anything, Nick?
No, that was, that was a good answer.
I think you've been a little too talkative, kind of Nick.
They're just killing it.
And, okay, and then my other one, cause I have to get picky about something, on that fire, are you fire wise, it's page thirteen of the slide. I, it's, it's hard, well, the first thing that stuck out is I think so many of us that wanna be, um. Good environmental stewards, we haven't been watering our grass to say water and to do the right thing, so here you've got a picture for keep your grass green. Um, and then my other que- I have a couple of questions in this, I guess I'll just shoot through them. Um, and then this picture also, I was thinking, especially as we densify our city. I don't think many of us could put our woodpile thirty feet from our house, because I don't think our yards are that big, so. And the trees too, that concerns me of like, when we're so densely packed, are there trees and, um. Also like the backyard habitat where we're taking out our grass, I know that's gotta help with the groundwater filtering, but. Like how, how do those, it seems almost like a conundrum, like if you wanna be fire safe and green, they're two different, like you said with the trees. So how do we, um, balance that?
Yeah, and I'm gonna have Josh gonna tack on in a minute with the technical stuff, but, um, one thing I recall from our research on future climate conditions is. Um, Twalton in and of itself, the fire risk actually isn't super, super, super high. Um, it's more the smoke and the smoke traveling and so I think from a risk standpoint, um. It's not necessarily the fire, it's the smoke and so maybe that slide was a little.
Maybe the trees filter the smoke a little.
I would take that answer, um, I don't know if you wanna add anything, Josh?
Oh, I'd just say there are a whole lot of conundrums, right? You wanna support, uh, growth of businesses and the maturation of your downtown and yet it's a flooding, flood prone area. Right, and I just say that every, every infrastructure group, every city, every community we work with. Is saying, how do we go from maintaining the system to create the new system we need incrementally? As we replace portions of it. Sometimes that's a really dramatic thing, like wastewater collection not flowing in the summer. Because everything's now low flow. Or, uh, there's no groundwater permeating the pipes and keeping things moving. And so you're gonna have to pump or you're gonna have to change the slopes of every single sewer collection pipe. So there are these weird choices, but if you're pumping, then at least you can do a solar pump, right? So there's, you have to walk through these scenarios with the people that do the work. The maintenance folks, the operations folks, they know where things are wrong. They probably have it in their head and they know on a certain day when it's raining, they're like, oh man, I gotta go to that intersection. Pull the leaves into that drain. So talk to the people that do the work and walk them through this mental exercise and start inventorying it. And building a list and saying, what is their priority, where does it hurt the most, what's the biggest hotspot and work backwards? We always have a capital improvement program, it's an, a forever thing in, in public works. So we just need to look at that through a different lens and maybe change a few priorities. But you're creating the system of the future, you're not maintaining the system that was well designed for yesterday. That's a different mindset. So just kind of switching the language on that is really important, but ultimately, ask the people to do the work, they're the one living it.
I'll add one other thing, because, um, I get to talk about the fire wise resources with the community and it's a guide. So, you know, it's like any emergency planning guide where you have to kinda look at what's out there and figure out what's gonna work best for you. Um, and so if you don't have a property lot that's big enough to keep your log pile thirty feet away. Think about where you could put it as long as it's away from your, your building. And it's not about taking out your trees or your, your bushes, it's about just like maintaining it so that way it's not. You know, it's actually like clean and away from power lines or anything that might ignite. Um, so it seems like a lot of things that's like, wait, what am I supposed to do? But the more you educate yourself, you'll realize like, oh, I can do these five things and the other things just don't apply to me. And then last, I just wanna say thank you for all your work, it's, um, that Sacramento thing hits me every time. And at least we're trying to do something to make it better for the future.
That's good, so you're next.
Well, thank you for the information. I, I am in the industry, I'm in the horticulture industry and, and I am one of those people who does do the work when it comes to outside landscaping, taking care of communities. I will say I'm, I'm optimistic that the information you're telling me is true and correct and I look forward to the details, the, the, the details are the devil. Um, but I will say, J- Josh, that you might exaggerate a little bit, that when we buy plants, we're not going south. We're, we're buying plants from this climate zone here. Um, we're looking for plants that are hardier and tougher and can take the details, okay? And we want them to adapt. That's, that's the key thing, not change our ecosystem too. So I think you exaggerated that a little bit too much. Um, and why don't we just handle, hand, hand bubbles, bubble wrapper to everybody because it is not the city's responsibility to provide all the comforts of, of life to, to our citizens. We have to be very respectful of private property rights and also businesses. And so I am looking forward to these details. But I'm concerned that you might have exaggerated your story a little bit and I appreciate it. I mean, that's, that's the goal of a presentation is to get people engaged. But I'm anxious to see details, okay? Because, um, we have to respect property rights, for sure. And I work outside. You know, we've come a long ways with people where we used to work outside all the time. We didn't wear smoke masks and I get it, we're, we're having a lot of fires and things like that, but kind of become a little bit too sensitive here that we're trying to take care of every, everybody's comfort and that's not our jobs to do that. And so I do welcome the new technology in the private sector, which we see a lot of it, um, advancing, where I don't think that we need to get involved. There's some things that we can do, uh, that low hanging fruit that I'm surprised we haven't. Now, I really don't understand why it's even part of the action plan, for example, tree codes. Why is that wrapped into this action? That's something that we should just be doing. Uh, water conservation for homeowners, incentives around that. We haven't even touched that. You haven't even mentioned one thing about that. Okay, about incentivizing homeowners to take these steps as I have to, to conserve resources by our home. You've talked none of that. You've talked about enforcements, potential policies, zoning rule changes. You know, things like that, when all of us have been enlightened, that conservation is key. But we own it. I own my responsibility to my home in my environment. Okay, I'm not gonna have government regulate businesses, regulate my private home. Cause I did see a small note about allowing retention at homes. I see that eventually being a permit process, which is a money grab. So I, I'm gonna be cautious about these, these things that are just suggestions right now, but eventually will be the rulebook for enforcement. Okay? As it is now, um, there's fees for everything. Who is paying for all this? Grants? And is it sustainable long-term? All of us know privately how, how to conserve. I know I do. I've, I've learned in the last twenty years. Um, so I'm, I'm excited about this plan, but I'm also cautious because this information is a little bit exaggerated, okay? As a person who works outside in the environment, um, in dirt and sea plants, even to add to your point on the warming temperatures here of the Pacific Northwest, is that we're seeing weeds emerge that typically wouldn't show up until June, July. They showed up in February, March. We are aware of that, okay? We're aware of that and we've adjusted. And then we've seen, um, situations like that a, ari- arise in the last forty years. You know, it's here now, it's not, it's no longer here. Um, so just gonna be cautious. So I'm looking forward to the plan and, and the conversation. Thank you.
That's red.
Thank you very much for the information. Very informative. Um, I, uh, work for an organization that did preparedness and, you know, disaster response for nationally, internationally. So a lot of the stuff you mentioned were already in my, the back of my head because we, we talked about floods, we talked about earthquakes. Um, there were a lot of, a lot of information that we would give to our, um, to just the community as being that international non- nonprofit that responds to disasters about, hey, your area, especially like the Pacific side where, you know, your area is a tsunami area. Here's what to do in case, um, this happens. So I really appreciate what you said about those kinds of low hanging fruits, which is mostly the information on how I, as a person who lives here, would happen to be in, in an emergency, where to go, how to do it, where the resources are, resources are and be able to, um, in a way protect the envi- be, be better, be a better steward of our city, of our, our resources and also our environment. And respect that because the environment is harsh. I mean, things happen and you can't control mo- mother nature, so. Um, uh, one of the things that they, during my period during that, with that organization, they mentioned that most people die during extreme cold versus extreme heat. Is that still correct?
That map shows that mortality would decrease in the north and increase in the south.
Because of the cold, being cold, extreme cold.
Older climates were getting more mild.
Right, so I guess the, the support will be when, um, for instance, I have also heard when, um, you turn on your AC, you're actually hurting the climate, the, the environment. Is that still correct?
It depends on where your power is sourced. So if we had all coal plants out here, which we don't, most of them are being phased out within a few years, then that would be the case. But if you're not burning fuel, then that's not the case. It's different.
So still use the AC?
Uh, all, all energy has a signature. It has an impact somewhere. It's just different when it's wind and it kills raptors versus, uh, coal and it's heating the entire planet, right? It depends on what the effects are.
Okay.
They're, they're not equivalent when it comes to climate though. There's big differences and hydro is one of those things that for the climate looks great, but for fish, it doesn't look so great.
Right. So there's that, those compromises that we all as humans and everyone who lives, including, uh, you know, we all live in this world to protect, like you mentioned, the birds and the forest. I've heard the same thing as you mentioned, should we let these be burned and then let the birds who are be, have been waiting for years to bring seeds or grow things. I mean, there, there's just a lot of things. And I think that that is really important. I, I liked your presentation. I enjoyed it. I think it's really, for me, brought in a lot of, um, kind of what I have been thinking and what I have learned throughout the years, but definitely, um, if, if, if I, if we are writing or doing mitigation on climate action, being action right for the future, uh, I like to, it's really hard to read the hundred plus ideas that we are not regulations, cause it's not a regulation, but the, the changes, um, try to like, I don't know, small bites. What can we do that's really now, but it would affect us? I, I think that for me would be a better way of processing and being more effective. But I appreciate your information. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments? Okay, thank you for your, uh, presentation tonight and looking forward to continue conversation on this. I, as other counselors are saying, uh, the devil's in the details, but like, I want to circle back again. This is not a regulatory document. This is just a plan. Uh, those things are gonna impact the community. We'll certainly have community input. Uh, it'll be a process. It's not something we're just gonna drop an ordinance and pass in two weeks. Well, thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we've got about five minutes, so we'll probably do the, uh, council roundtable at the end of a city council me- uh, meeting. Uh, tonight I've got two proclamations. Uh, one is, uh, recognizing Native American Heritage Month. Anyone want to volunteer for that? Gabrielle had her hand up first, I think. Uh, Small Business Saturday? Alright, so Bridget will do Native American and Council President Pratt will do, uh, Small Business Saturday. Uh, Council Brooks, you're up for the pledge too. You're a busy person tonight. Alright, uh, so it gives us about five minutes to take a quick break. And we'll come back at seven o'clock for our regular city council meeting. Go ahead and call this work session as adjourned.